Good evening. This is Wednesday, February 18th, and we are the City Commission. Good evening. I'm Alice Norris, the mayor.
And I'm Daphne West, the Commissioner President.
James Nacito, City Commissioner.
Doug Neely, City Commissioner.
Rocky Smith, City Commissioner.
Would you please stand and join me in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. As you all know, this is the sesquicentennial of Oregon, and Oregon City has many things happening for the celebration, and one thing we're doing is having the sesquicentennial moment, which are designed to be interesting things in Oregon City's history. But I'm going to go back and talk about what we did to get the headlines on Oregon's birthday, which was when? February 14th on Saturday. As you know, we proposed a petition to move the Capitol to its rightful place, back to Oregon City, and my husband and I got to sit on the floor of the House as this was debated. So I wanted to have that be the sesquicentennial moment this evening. Speaker of the House, Dave Hunt, moved Proclamation Number -- or Petition Number One, which was an amendment to change the Constitution to change the seat of government to Clackamas County, and Petition Number Two, which was the one that we passed here to move the seat of government to Oregon City. And his three reasons in discussion were the fact that for the majority of legislators, Oregon City would be a shorter commute and therefore more sustainable. Secondly, it was because the Democrats had moved it back to Salem, where they resided, that this would be the example of the Democrats having overstepped and would be redressed for that wrong. And then because Oregon City was a wig town. Now, Republican, that would be that the Republicans then would get their just desserts. So there would be absolutely no reason for anyone to disapprove this petition. So those who I will let you see these petitions. And then the discussion went on, and if all discussion at the state legislature were as witty and as focused and as wonderful as it was, then we would all be in great shape here in the state of Oregon. The second speaker was from Salem, and she stood up, and I got personally addressed on the floor, and it was Casey at the Bat, which was rewritten to say Alice Norris stepped up to the back and took the mighty swing, and there is no joy in Oregon City since the Mayor Norris struck out. Then the individual speakers went on. We actually did have one supporter, another supporter for the petition, and that was Jules Koppel Bailey. As you know, Jules' father, Bob Bailey, sat right up here for three and a half years, and he said that he had to support it because his father told him to. And then we had a substitute resolution designating Farewell Bend as the state capital of Oregon. This was moved by the state treasurer as one of them, and he said it was because Bend has 444 days of sunshine, whereas the Secretary of State popped up and said, "Well, if you're managing our money, I think you don't know how to count." Whereas the speaker responded, "Well, I think that he's doing more with less." So then we had a resolution designating Tualatin County as the Oregon state capital, and that was because it was quiet and tranquil. Then we had another one that designated Bruna Vista as the state capital, which is a little place just south of Salem, and it was because it originally was platted for the state capital, and it remains platted today and never developed. So they thought that it would be really easy to move the Capitol there. Astoria decided, since they were the first settled town in Oregon, that it really ought to go to Astoria. And who else? Anyway, it was a spirited bid for the state capital, and the final resolution was that a task force was formed to study it and will be convening again in 2059. Also, a really wonderful booklet that I will -- I didn't get copies for these, but if any commissioners want to have these copies, Empire Builders by Robert Orman Case. We had a ton of really fun stuff on the dais, and it was really a very fun morning. Oh, actually, someone accused Oregon City of having just another headline-grabbing opportunity, and I said, "Yes, we did." So it was extremely wonderful, and I understand that Doug Neely, as Dr. McLaughlin, was the photo op of the evening at the -- when you went to the ball with 900 of your best friends in the rotant -- at the State Convention Center.
Well, I'm not--
Dr. McLaughlin, please.
I'm a little confused. I had several people that came -- several people came up to Dr. McLaughlin there and recognized him, but at least three people came up and asked if Dr. McLaughlin was portraying Scrooge. So I'm not sure how Dr. McLaughlin took it, but he -- I don't think he was happy.
Well, it was really a wonderful day in the Capitol, and I think--
Can I have a question?
Yes, sir.
It sounded like you ought to have a coordinated effort where you could have put forward a motion to reject Salem as a capital, then work out later which one it would be. It looks like a majority of the people were coming up with their recommendations that shouldn't be Salem.
Yeah, absolutely, and the task force, I'm sure, will determine that as they study it in the next 50 years.
That it won't be Salem.
Well, I got a nice note from the Mayor of Salem, Janet Taylor, who said that she sat there and listened with an open mind during the discussion, and she was certainly glad we didn't prevail. So much for an open mind. Anyway, that's the sesquicentennial moment. I think we've had our moment in the sun, but Commissioner Smith is one of the three of us on the Oregon City Organizing Committee. Would you like to talk about one of our great new offerings?
Yes. We have a new brochure going out around the city. You can probably find it at most of the schools, if not now, soon, and City Hall, library--
Historical sites.
--historical sites around town, and a lot of businesses as well. So 150 Things to Do in 2009 in Oregon City. And I was going to commit to doing all of them, but then I looked and I saw--
A tattoo.
--number 85, get a tattoo. So I'm going to try really hard to do the 150 Things, but I'm not sure about that one quite yet. But anyway, get a copy of this and get out there and start doing things in Oregon City.
Great. Thank you. You want to do that later? No, why don't you go ahead, Commissioner?
Saturday for the kickoff day for the Oregon 150, we had Free Museum Day, and with record amounts of crowds in Oregon City at our facilities. And I can't quite remember the numbers for the--
500.
500 at each of the museum or the organe--
The total, that was what they registered, but it was the only place that really counted.
But there was so many people, there were even concerns with the historical homes that, you know, fire issues with the fire marshal because of too many people in the building and for the old buildings. So we had a -- we were really happy. A great day.
The trolleys were jam-packed, and the museums were jam-packed, and it was all paid with grant funds, and it was just a wonderful opportunity to expose Oregon City free to many, many visitors. So it was a really wonderful day. Thanks to everyone who organized it. Okay, let's move along. We have something that's always very important to me, and that is when we get to administer the oath of office to police officers, and these will be new reserve officers. And I will call on Lieutenant Lisa Nunes to administer the oath.
I'm very happy to present to the Commissioners and Mayor Norris my two new reserve officers. They just graduated from the academy on Friday, the 13th. We made it. We're very happy.
You just fought the 13th?
Yes. The academy is long. It's like four months long. I coordinate it, and it takes a lot of time from family, and for these guys, they have full-time jobs, actually pay money that they have to do at the same time. So this is Gabriel Byr-- Byrle?
Byrle.
Byrle. See, I even screwed that up. Sorry. And Gabriel, he works for North Clackamas School District, is building maintenance, and he is not married. He graduated from Milwaukee High School, and he currently lives in Milwaukee. This is Chad Blackman. He's actually a graduate from Molalla High School. He's married. He has two awesome little children that aren't here tonight because Mom says they're wild. And he currently works for ODOT, and he actually worked graveyard tonight. So we're going to hurry up and do this for him so he can get to work, so.
Thank you, Lieutenant. Let's get on it. Thank you. If you'd raise your right hand and repeat after me. I instate your name.
I, Gabriel Byrle.
I'm Chad Blackman.
Do solemnly swear--
Do solemnly swear.
--that I will uphold the law--
That I will uphold the law.
--and support the Constitution of the United States--
And support the Constitution of the United States.
--and the state of Oregon.
And the state of Oregon.
I will abide by the law enforcement--
I will abide by the law enforcement.
--code of ethics--
Code of ethics.
--and the department's rules and regulations--
And the department's rules and regulations.
--while faithfully performing my duties--
While faithfully performing my duty.
--as a reserve police officer--
As a reserve police officer.
--for Oregon City, Oregon.
For Oregon City, Oregon.
Thank you very much. Welcome. We have many pleasurable things this evening, and another one is to introduce maybe the newest guy in town, and that is our new Main Street manager, and we'll leave the details to Commissioner West. You both can sit at that table. That's a good way to get on camera.
Thank you. Well, it's been a long time coming for us. We started working on our Main Street program last May, and what is that, about nine months later, eight months later, we've got a wonderful new manager on board. So I'm really pleased to introduce tonight Mr. Lloyd Purdy. And Lloyd comes to us here in Oregon City from Cortland, New York, which is a town upstate New York with about 20,000 people, so similar to where -- similar to the size of Oregon City. Lloyd has developed collaborations with municipal, educational, and private enterprise partners to cultivate the commerce and culture of historic downtown Cortland through their National Trust for Historic Preservation Main Street approach. So we feel very confident that he's going to be able to help us do this here in Oregon City. Lloyd also was a recent graduate from Syracuse with not only one master's but two masters. He's got Public Administration and Landscape Architecture. So hopefully that Landscape Architecture, he's going to have us looking better downtown. And tomorrow night is an opportunity for everyone that isn't here tonight to come down to Main Street and meet him. We're going to have a little cocktail reception at 7:08 Main Street and upstairs in room 206, which is his new office and where he'll be able to be found. So from 4:00 to 7:00 tomorrow night, you're welcome to come join us downtown. So welcome, Lloyd.
Welcome, Lloyd. It's great to have you as a partner on Main Street. Do you want to say a couple words to us?
Just that it's a--
To the people?
Yeah, it's a pleasure to be here, this meeting, as well as be here in downtown Oregon City. I look forward to meeting those of you I haven't had a chance to meet yet. We keep a very open-door policy. As long as you can catch me walking up and down the street, we'll talk. And that's where I spend most of my time downtown, putting the people, bringing the people together to make good projects happen. I look forward to chatting with all of you either tomorrow night or in the future.
Great. Thank you, and welcome.
Thank you.
Glad you were able to come. Next, we'll go into citizen comments. There is no proclamation for Oregon 150.
We have quite a few tonight.
Okay, under citizen comments--
Not two at a time?
No, give them all of them. Okay. Under citizen comment, we have quite a group of people, so I will call you up two at a time to come. And when you come up to the microphone, please give your name and the city in which you live, and then you may speak for us for up to three minutes on whatever topic. Since there's so many, we hope that you'll make your remarks very concise, or if one can speak for a group, well, that's fine also. You'll notice when the yellow light comes on, that means you have 30 seconds left, so you can see on the monitor on the desk to judge your speaking time. So first, Tom Guile and Joanna Beulie. Would you please come up together?
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Tom Guile, Oregon City. I'm just here to promote and encourage, also announce, the photography contest that we've got planned for the Oregon City 150 Celebration, the Sesquicentennial. It's been promoted with press releases. I'm not sure if they've been in the papers yet, but we really want to get the word out to all our citizens, as well as to any of the Commissioners, to participate. This is 150 days of the life of Oregon City, so it's going to cover events. We've actually got four categories. Events, there's a lot of events going on in the next 150 days. People at events, people having a good time at various events. Animals, nature-- excuse me, there's two different categories. Animals, wildlife is one category, and nature in Oregon City. We have a lot of great parts. There's two categories, color and black and white, and there's going to be three winners in each, so actually that's 24 different winners. And the whole idea of this is to get the citizens involved, get them out there with their cameras. We have a youth division at 17 and under and 18 and above. So that's a lot of winners that can participate, get ribbons, get recognition. At the end of this, when all the photos are submitted here at City Hall, we'll have a display. We will be making that announcement shortly where the display will be, and have an opening night, so people can come and see their photographs and be awarded. Along with this, we want to encourage people to start thinking about taking your camera with you. If you haven't been out to a park recently and walked along a trail with spring coming on, there's going to be some wildflowers, trilliums due on the flowers. There's going to be great opportunities from the spring through the summer. The last event of the season is going to be an old-time baseball game. There'll be opportunities there as well. You might even catch Dr. McLaughlin somewhere along the lines, and even that can be creatively approached.
He's hard to catch. He's hard to catch.
You might even get a Commissioner eating a hot dog and trying to discuss something controversial or something. And at any point, at any rate, excuse me, there's a lot of opportunities to take pictures, and everyone can be involved in this. Every citizen has a chance to win and break out your digitals, break out your film cameras, and just participate. If you need more information, we have a great website, oc150.com. And on oc150.com, you'll find lots of information about other events. You'll find the rules for this photo contest, and if you need more information, my email is on there as well. We'll have it judged, so no names will be shown on the front of the photograph, so it'll be very neutral, and you never know who might win a special recognition. So I hope you all participate, and you're all -- it's for amateurs, non-professionals, and I think you're all in that category.
Yeah.
So please participate.
Thank you. oc150.com for more information.
Correct. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Do you want to pull that mic towards you? Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. Okay, well, I don't have a lot of time.
Please introduce yourself.
Pardon?
Please introduce yourself.
My name is Joanna Beulie, and I am a parent of children at Park Place School, as well as Og-- no, not Ogden this year, and the Oregon City High School. I'm a PTO member at Park Place and volunteer. I just found out that the Oregon City Commission included in their goals this year an agreement to work, explore ways the city can assist the school district financially or otherwise during the time of crisis, partnering with the school district. First, I wanted to just say that I appreciate that because it confirms the fact that the Commission recognizes that our school district and our municipal governments do not operate in isolation from one another, and that we each contribute to the betterment of the other, to the whole community as a whole. I have to go really fast. Okay. I know that some of these ideas have been kind of out in the public a little bit, but I wanted to bring them here to hopefully put them on the table. Number one, I want to make some proposals that will keep crucial educational facility, namely Park Place, open, as well as a functioning school, and also help the whole city and school district. The first, it is my hope that the Urban Renewal Commission can extend the boundary, and I did look at the Oregon Revised Statute, and it is possible to do. I don't know whether we would have to make an amendment or not--
Yes.
--because it has to be under 1%, but we can change that boundary up to 20% also under the Oregon Revised Statute. I think it's crucial to keep property values up in that area, which is one major goal of urban renewal. I think it's crucial because it will add property values in the long run by having a closely-located school. And of course, it would make that neighborhood more attractive to incoming families. I spoke to a family again today who that was -- having that school there is the very reason that they moved to that location, and having it closed is going to detract from that reason. Another idea that I know has been floated out, but I'm going to put it forth today, is to possibly locate one branch library in or adjacent to Park Place School. And a third, but I don't know, it may be too late, is to possibly levy some fees on the development of the Cove and specifically direct those fees near market for the Oregon City Schools Foundation, or even a separate foundation that can go to creating more equity among all the schools. And finally, I think that the public is ready for a local option, and I'm not sure who goes about bringing that to the table.
The school district.
Okay.
Thank you.
And I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next two speakers, Christine Kozinski and Patrick Kelly. You would please come forward.
Sure?
Go ahead.
Okay. Hi, I'm Patrick Kelly, and I live in Oregon City, and I would like to also speak in support of seeing the city somehow getting involved with the Oregon City School District and finding a way to keep the schools that are in the district still open, looking at creative ways to have the city and possibly the district work together in terms of finding ways of keeping facilities open or opening new facilities, namely, that was just mentioned, the library. And Mayor Norris, in your address to the state of the city, you talked about a 13% increase in the use of the library, also a record-setting year in circulation, and that kind of thing going on. And then I think you also stated that we need to find a new location for a new library, I think somewhere in there. But to make a long story short, it seems like in these times, all organizations can get creative, learn to work together, and in turn, instead of a bailout like someone mentioned earlier, finding a way to work together to save money, to help facilitate situations that help the community as a whole. My outlook in looking at this, I moved to specifically to the Park Place attendance area, put a lot of research into the school, and chose to have my children go there. The first ones in kindergarten. I have two more boys to go, and my hope was that they would be in school, at that school, for the duration. My background in understanding what's going on with the districts, I'm a special education teacher in Reynolds School District, and I've seen over and over, schools close, classes get more crowded, and that's when the holes start in kids' education, and that's when the holes start socially in our communities and cause lots of problems as a whole. So hopefully, we can find a way to all work together. I know, Mayor Norris, you're pretty creative and look outside the box a little bit to find ways of doing things, so perhaps we can look at that issue right there.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Christine, you're not talking -- you're just being support group?
Uh, no.
Oh, 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 sorry.
The reason I'm giving this to you is because I can't possibly give you office in terms of--
A little longer than three minutes, but thank you for doing it in writing.
Christine Kozinski, Incorporated Clackamas County. I actually thought I'd be able to talk at the Urban Renewal meeting today, and since I couldn't, I'm bringing it to you now. I wrote a letter yesterday to Carlotta Colette at Metro, and the reason I'm giving you a copy is because it has a lot of my concerns in it regarding the Cove. I know there's been a lot of talk about the ordinary high-water line, but I want you to know why it's so important and it's correct. Because the survival of the salmon-rearing ponds depends on this setting. If the 18-foot water line is allowed to stand, then unfortunately, this will allow many trees to be cut down. These are the very trees which shade and support the fragile environment of the salmon-rearing ponds, and it is also the trees which are highly attractive to the damsel and the mayflies. If the trees are allowed to be removed, the water temperatures will rise, virtually decimating both the salmon-rearing ponds as well as the damsel and mayflies for which the salmon rely upon for food and survival. I wanted to bring to your attention on Luba Case number 2008-052. I bring this case to your attention because the second claim on this case was one, because they could not prove that they were protecting the salmon. I also wanted to bring to your attention Oregon State Goal 16, which many of the issues in Goal 16 were raised at the Planning Commission meetings. Goal 16 protects the estuaring resources. Oregon Goal 16 recognizes the need to protect the unique environmental, economic, and social values of each estuary and associated wetlands, and recognizes the need to protect and maintain them. Upon reading Goal 16, it does appear that the requirements of this goal have not been recognized by the city. The highest general priority of Goal 16 is for uses which maintain the integrity of the estuaring ecosystem. In all estuaries, areas shall be designated to assure the protection of significant fish and wildlife habitats. Page five of Goal 16 talks about something that I requested, where I asked for an overview of the state and federal agencies which shall review these concerns, those being NOAA, Fisheries, DEQ, Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife, U.S. Fish and Wildlife, State Lands Division, Army Corps of Engineers. I also cited the transportation problems because there's no way that there's going to be 20 cars in the morning and 20 cars in the afternoon when we have 500 spaces to fill at Kaiser. The last concern that I would raise is the Ash Creek Geotechnical Firm. They strongly point out the many and significant challenges, and at that point, I requested that Oregon City obtain a second opinion from a qualified firm.
Can you summarize, please?
Yes, I will. One of the things that I'm concerned about is that the DEQ ground well logs are not going to be in the record. Dan Lejois asked for that to happen, but because the record had already been closed, it won't happen, but I think they're extremely important. I will turn all of this testimony into the city--
Great.
--along with a copy of Goal 16 and a copy of the ordinary high-water line.
Thank you. Next, is it Mark Hyde and Susan Fisher?
These are some pictures I would like to demonstrate what we're talking about, and here are some notes.
Yes, please, go ahead.
Mark Hyde, Oregon City. We, a group of us are here. We live in a relatively new development on Laurel Lane. It's six houses that were built in 2006. For the past two years, we have been going through some situations with some kids that are in the apartment complex next to ours. They have taken over our streets as, I don't want to say their playground, because they're not kids that play. They're skateboarders, and they harass us. They vandalize communities. So if you don't mind, I just want to refer to my notes here. Access to our houses, of course, is down the road. Every time that we come home from work, we have to look forward to a group of kids blocking the way of our vehicles. When they do get out of the way, they take their sweet time. A lot of times, they'll leave a rail and a ramp in the road that we have to drive around. This is a road. This is not a playground. You'll never see anything like that on any other street anywhere. You'll never see anything like that on any other street anywhere. And then, when we drive past them, we're subject to harassment. They yell at us, they make rude gestures at us. There's been a considerable amount of damage to property. The fence between the apartment complex and our housing area is constantly being kicked down. They've destroyed very expensive path lighting. The city got tired of replacing it, and so it's no longer there. They've destroyed trees, they burned a fence, one of our neighbor's fence. There's also been three additional fires as a result of them. They knocked out a street light. And in addition, the skateboarding is destroying the curbs. There's also demonstrations of extremely unacceptable behavior, public urination. They pee on the fence, they pee in the street, they peed on one of the neighbors', our neighbor's' doorways. They pee in a bottle and throw it over the fence. They run around swearing at the top of their lungs. They ride up and down the street yelling at us while we're in our houses. We've witnessed underage drinking, underage smoking, and blatant sexual behavior, and fighting. The police have been out there a number of times to break up fights. We initially did not mind the kids playing in the streets, because, you know, they were doing their skateboarding and so forth, and that was fine. And we were trying to coexist with them, but since they started harassing us and since they started trashing our neighborhood, we've been attempting for the past couple of years to get it to stop. Mike and his group have been doing a great job coming out there.
Please chief, you mean?
Pardon me?
The please chief?
Yes, I'm sorry. No disrespect.
No, 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 I just want to identify which Mike you were talking to.
You can beat me later. But it hasn't stopped. Every day, we come home and we dread going down that road because we think we're going to see these guys out there. In addition to the kids from the apartment complex, they also import their buddies. We have carloads that come in from other places, and they park there and they skateboard and just trash the place.
Could you summarize, please, your comments?
Okay. Yeah, I'm not going to be able to get through it, maybe you can continue. But we need to have some help from the city council. We need to have the gate from the apartment complex closed off so that they don't have access to our area, and we also have to have the gate to the school closed off. There was never access to the school initially. That was just done when our apartment, or when our complex was put up. We did a count. Bob took off the other day from school and counted 10 kids that utilized that gate. So it's really not anything that's being utilized to any great extent. So, am I done?
One concluding sentence, but I think we do have your written materials, so.
Yes. We would appreciate your help, and we need your help.
Thank you. Next?
Did I make a quick comment in response to that comment?
What, do you want to wait till after?
Sure, I can write that down, but I do have something to say about it.
Thank you.
Okay, I think she's talking about the same thing, so.
Yeah, I am.
Okay, why don't you just go ahead and then, you have to make your response.
Yeah, no, you want her to say?
Yes, please. Yes, thank you. I think in the interest of time.
Okay, mine is obviously along the same lines, Susan Fisher, Oregon City. I also live in the Laurel Lane neighborhood, and when we first moved in there, it was, you know, quiet. We moved in Oregon City 10 years ago. It's been wonderful. I've never seen anything like we have seen in this neighborhood. That fence area is just the most ridiculous hangout for these kids. I've seen them, they'll come up, they'll hang out there, their friends will park their cars there, I'll see the little, the kids come around the fence, seemingly making some type of transaction, you know, take a guess. And just recently, it's been more than just skateboarding. And the other path that's out to the schoolyard that was never there before is, with all of the lights out on it now, dark. We live right next to there, so we don't, these guys don't see some of the stuff that we see over there. But we've seen, you know, people being harassed over there, we've seen sexual acts over there that, you know, the police have gone through there a number of times. It's a perfect gateway for, they've had thieves stealing things from the plaid pantry that's over on Lynn Avenue. It comes, they come straight through the schoolyard, they come straight through there and right out into the apartments. And the police have told us that that's a perfect avenue for them to get away. And I don't see a whole lot of use for it for the kids going to school, like, you know, like Mark said, Bob did a count, there aren't that many, really, that are actually utilizing that legitimately. And everything that we've seen, that's the area where they've burned our neighbor's fence, you know, they'll toss cigarette butts out into the bark dust, up it goes, you know. I've been out there several times, and we've had to put out, you know, put out fires and whatnot. But at this point, these kids are getting, we've called the cops so many times, they're starting to get really mad at us, and they're going to start retaliating. And most of us work during the day, we've seen these kids out there during the day, well, a couple of us, you know, will work from home. So they'll see them out there. We have no way of keeping our homes safe if we're not there. And if we are there, you know, God only knows what they're going to do to retaliate at that point. So we really, really, really need to get these gates closed.
Thank you. Commissioner Nocita.
Yeah, this is, if you got your pen ready, I have a reference for you guys to do some research into.
Oh, okay.
Because as a new commissioner, I've been boning up on our city code, because it's something I, you know, a new commissioner has to know. And there's some provisions on nuisance in our ordinances that I think are underutilized, and I recommend you take a look at them.
Okay.
And one is Chapter 8.32 of the city code. It's online at orcity.org. Chapter 8.32 is chronic nuisance property, and I think that might be relative, relevant to what you're dealing with there. And the other one is Chapter 8.08 on nuisances. And eight point, the first one, the first one I cited to you, 8.32, actually has a prevailing attorney fee provision. So that might help you out in dealing with your issues too. And of course, you know, we'll do everything we can to help out on this issue, but I did want to, I think those code ordinances might be helpful.
Thank you. I also reference an Oregon revised statute on the second page with regards to obligations.
Thank you. The last speaker, Lance Fisher, please. I don't have another card.
Bob Hearing?
Oops, did I miss? I remember seeing that name. Bob, please come forward. You got lost in the staff.
Actually, I was coming anyway.
I thought that that would have been just fine.
Either way. Bob Hearing, Laurel Lane. When you folks go home at night, what do you look forward to seeing in your neighborhood? Your neighbors, your houses are safe, you look forward to speaking to those people, probably visiting with them, they're probably your friends. We don't. We try to sneak down our street, we try to get past the gang, and you'll see in those pictures that they are a gang. They're a nationally recognized organization that is a gang. Oregon City Police have been very helpful to us, to the point that they can take it. But the fact is, these gates have to be closed. Our safety, our peace of mind, our well-being, our property values are all suffering because these people are allowed to ride roughshod on our neighborhood. This is a case of the bad guys have more rights than the citizens who are contributing to the community. And it's out of hand. It's two and a half years for me, this is the second time I've appeared with you folks and another time with the city manager to try to come to some resolution on this. It's beyond belief. If we could sell our homes right now, we would do it in a heartbeat, because we feel like we've been abandoned. That's how bad it is. These people are violent. They threatened one of the neighbors on the third. You'll see in the incident report that I believe the police chief provided you, that the third of this month, there was an incident at 9:55 on our street, she saw them out there, they were skateboarding up and down the street, flipping our houses off, yelling every obscenity that you could possibly imagine. They started to kick my cat. She stuck her head out and yelled at them, they verbally assaulted and threatened her at that time. This is a very typical reaction from these kids when they are on our street. It's over and over again. We don't have peace of mind. I've changed my lifestyle to live in this neighborhood. We keep our blinds closed if it's afternoon, because these SOBs peek in our windows and see what we're doing. They're intimidation and threats. You'll see in those pictures, they look like a bunch of kids that are playing, they're not. These are the most vile, antisocial, deviant people that you can imagine. They don't want to have a meaningful, calm, constructive conversation with anyone. I was out there yesterday, this will offend some people. They rolled up in their car, parked by the gate, I was in my front yard, one of them jumps out, Carlos, thanks to the chief again, we have been able to get Carlos evicted from the apartments on a no trespass warrant. But unfortunately, Carlos has been the gang leader, he's perpetuated new people, we're seeing kids I've never seen before on there. Their first words out was, "Hey, fucking nigger, where's your goddamn cellphone? I fucking want to use it." This is the language that we, I know it offends you, but we live with this every day. Nine of the last 13 days, these kids, in some form, usually five, quite often 15, are on our streets, 50 feet from my front door, skateboarding for three hours. You think waterboarding is bad? This is psychotic. I can't believe that I'm living under these circumstances. It's terrible. Please, help us and close these gates, please.
Thank you.
Lance Fisher, I'm actually the husband of Susan here, and I'm basically going to reiterate everything that's going on here, but I'm going to probably be more along the line of Bob. At this point, I'm speechless, we do need your help. I'm a little bit more on the other end that, and I've told everybody involved, and I'm not, I have no shyness sitting here now, that if I, my wife, or I, or any of the women in our neighborhood have to go down that street anymore and get physically threatened or called bitch, I'm stepping out of my car, and I don't care if I have cuffs on, I'm sick and tired of this. We have tried to befriend these kids when we first moved in. I am sick and tired of the names being called, the abuse, riding down the streets, flipping us off, peeing on our yards, peeing in front of us, and not thinking a thing about it. I can't go to my master bedroom suite, oh, except the other night, I got to watch some fornication right down on my backyard. And that, and you asked me where those people came from, I sat up all night and I watched them walk to the apartment. That's just a small portion of the sexual acts that are going on, and these people have that avenue, that open up that gate allows them to walk through into the park. If those two were shut, they would, yes, they would find another avenue, but there's really no other place they can do it. The problem is, is the grandkids cannot go out and plant the yard. It's not allowed. We can't do it because of the fornication. These kids will literally, I saw it in the snow in December, went directly up in front of children and peed in the middle of our street without any shyness at all. They are destroying the fences, they, I came home, got home from a flight, drove home early, and I had these kids tearing apart my sprinkler system. If the gates were not there, there would be no thoroughfare. The thoroughfare was created for that school, and it has not served that purpose in any means except to allow crime to go through back and forth. The way the street is designed, it is designed without opening, I've seen these kids, they come around the gate, and they come through that gate and sit in our property to get away from either their parents seeing what they're doing, because it's usually drugs. The skateboarding isn't the issue, it's the drugs, it's the littering, it's the total annihilation of our property, peeing all over the place. I think you get the point. And I, all I can say is, is imagine yourself going home, and you're going down, and our street is sort of bottlenecked, it's a very unique situation, it's unlike any other street. We don't have a choice to go around these people. They'll have the rails on the street, and we've been kind enough to slow down, to give them the opportunity to move. We get the finger, the women usually get called, excuse me, I'm sorry, bitches, or else I get the gang signs and the threats. And I'm not tolerating it anymore. And the next call is probably going to be an ambulance.
Thank you.
Another quick question. What is it about this gate that would solve the problem if it were ordered closed?
The two gates they're talking about.
They need to be closed.
It's a thoroughfare for these, this particular group to come through the apartments and through.
To the school.
If that gate was closed, they'd have to walk down the normal street, down the normal sidewalk, which we don't have sidewalks on our street.
Who controls the gates?
School district.
School district.
The school district said that they would cooperate with the city on any decision they make, and once they close the gates, they'd be happy to do that.
And the reason they've agreed about that is, we've viewed this last couple of weekends, is these kids are going in these little corridors that they have built on the side of the schools, you know, their entries to the gym, doing drugs, injecting, sex, and we watched it, 2:30 the other week. And again, we sat up all night just watching this, because the police lights are coming in our master suite, and they have flashlights, or else they're chasing across the field, arresting somebody, and it's always, usually, from the apartments.
Yeah, it's difficult to be.
If the gates were shut.
Thank you. Okay, well, let's hear from our staff here.
Let me just kind of, this has been quite an issue, and it's another one of these connecting trails that we have with schools, and this issue comes up more and again. In fact, you have an issue growing on Laurel Lane with the trail that's still open over there. But let me kind of review with you some of the things that we've taken. We met with these neighbors, it's been several months ago, and we laid out a program of steps to see if we could address this situation. First thing we did was increase the police presence and response to these calls, and you can see they have continued, and I think Chief Conrad and his forces have tried to be as diligent as they can in doing that, and I think the neighbors would agree, but it, this is a.
But essentially, that's not been, it's not diminished anything?
That's one step. We've also installed a security camera. The neighbors were supportive of us doing that, that helps. But again, it's after the fact.
What is, what has been the result of the security camera?
Let me, I'll come back to that and have Chief Conrad address that issue. The ringleader of the group, we did work with the apartments, and after several calls dealing with this individual, we have had that person evicted from the apartments. Needless to say, we did have a few confrontations with the young man, and he is an interesting case.
Interesting, meaning not the normal term, normal?
I'll just leave it at that. When we first started this process, if you drove into the cul-de-sac, is the dividing fence between the apartments and Laurel Lane at the direction where the cul-de-sac opens, there was a fire gate, which was just a bar across there, and so that was an open access as well. And in fact, I can tell you, I drove out there one day, and there was several individuals who had pulled up a sofa, and were sitting there on the sofa, and wasn't doing anything at that particular time, but it was kind of an interesting scene. We have worked with the fire department, and we have installed a closed gate at that point. It's now a wooden gate, I believe it is, and so you can't walk through that as well. What you have is on Laurel Lane, on the west side, there's a connecting path between two homes to the school district. On the east side, with the dividing fence between Laurel Lane and the apartments, there's an opening in that fence that is part of that system, so you could leave the apartment, walk through that, connect to the trail, and get to the school, and it's a very short walk. Without that, you do have to go around, and that's a fairly considerable walk to that middle school, I believe it is, to make that connection. The neighbors feel that if we closed that opening in that gate that is between the Laurel Lane and the apartment complex, it will force that group more around. And we did talk about these progressive steps before we got to the point of whether this works. Now, whether that will solve all of the issues, I don't know. As they've indicated, at this point, you do have folks coming in by car and other ways that are coming down to that street. This has been going on for some time. I know these neighbors are very tense. It is a situation that I think if we do not find a remedy, somebody's going to get hurt out there, so. Chief Conrad can speak to you about other issues there as well.
And congratulations, I believe this is the first time that we get to introduce you as Oregon City's Chief of Police.
Thank you. I'm really proud of the partnership the police department has had with the neighbors on Laurel Lane. We've had a very good working relationship, we've communicated over the issues out there, and as the city manager indicated, we've done a lot of work out there to try to take care of the situation. One of the things we did do was. One of the things we did do was put up a security camera, which is actually monitored by the Department of Justice down in Salem. And it allows our sergeants in their patrol car to control the camera and span the street and get an idea of what's going on down there. It also allows us, if the neighbors tell us that something happened two days previously at about this time, to go back and look at that film, and hopefully the camera's pointing in the right direction when that incident took place, and identify suspects, and if a crime occurred, to kind of, to try to prosecute those people. There has been some problems with it going down intermittently, but for the most part, I think it's been pretty effective. I know the neighbors are convinced that if we close that opening up, that will take care of the majority of their problems. I think it will take care of some of their problems. I mean, they've obviously reached the boiling point. I think one of the issues we have to deal with, though, is if cars do still continue to come down there, we are somewhat limited in what we can do. There are no loitering laws in Oregon. They're unconstitutional. We cannot stop people from hanging out on the street corner and talking and congregating. And obviously, sometimes we have a lot of young people, and they do those type of activities, then you're going to have associated problems such as the littering, the criminal mischief, and things like that. The police department has taken a zero tolerance policy, and this is something we discuss in our staff meetings, monthly with our patrol sergeants, and we discuss it daily with our briefings with our officers, is that we are going to enforce every ordinance and every crime we can in order to take care of the situation. But we can't be there all the time. And like I said, the neighbors have been very diligent in trying to find a solution to this. I think the police department's been a good partner with them, but I think what they're asking now is for the commission to look at the idea of closing that gate off between the apartment complex and the, or the opening, I should say, not the gate, between the apartment complex and their houses on Laurel Lane. The fence is actually owned, is on city property.
Chief, let me ask you a question, because I know we've dealt with other nuisances, but what makes you confident that the closure of the gate won't move the problem just to a different section of town?
I'm not confident of that. I think it will help take care of some of these problems here, but these children or these teenagers are going to congregate somewhere. But we're hoping, when we went to contact the property managers of the Oregon City Terrace Apartments where this one particular individual lived, we worked in partnership with them. We explained the problem to them. They are very receptive to trying to get this young man out of there. Of course, they have to go through a lot of landlord-tenant issues in order to make that eviction come to pass. They did that. He's out of there now. The trouble is, is that he has a lot of his friends around that area, and he comes back to that area. He has a trespass order prohibiting him from going onto the apartment complex. It doesn't prohibit him from going onto the street in Laurel Lane and hanging out in front of these folks' house.
It's on your side.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Patterson.
I think the next logical step is looking at that closure. Now, again, that's a policy issue for the commission, because that deals with this connectivity, this trails issue in terms of things. Again, I understand why we have that. I can tell you, this is problematic. It will continue to be. This is not the only place that that happens. This is where planning and law enforcement sometimes collide, and part of that, I think, is probably the loss of civility in our society that we're not going to fix by planning connectivity in this type fashion, and we're going to run into these problems. This may be somewhat unique, what's there. That would be, but the logical next step, if that's something you wish to look at, would be the closure of that opening. Beyond that, the next step that you might want to think about, we did discuss this with the neighbors at one time, it does impose some cost to them, and it may not be an easy process to do, because there's a number of steps we have to look at, is actually vacating that street and making that a private street, so that they would be owned by the homeowners, and they could look at trespass on that street. Again, this kind of gets in the way of the connectivity issues that are part of your policies, but that could also be a step we could look at.
This reminds, yeah, we can't have a neighborhood being held hostage by juveniles. I mean, that is, that's just unconscionable. And I guess I'm thinking of the city of Gresham, as they were looking at trying to get help from Trimate to stop the vandalism on and around there like railstop. And that, I wonder if another solution would be, I would see the closure of the gate as necessary at this point, and maybe just, maybe temporary. If the problem is resolved someday and things change, I could see it being opened again, because the gates are temporary. But I'm wondering if we need to do something to cleanse the area, and again, I don't have a proposal for funding, but it's, I mean, we hired special officers for Clackmit Park for 4th of July. Could we hire a full-time, 24-hour, temporary?
Security service?
Yeah, rent-a-cop or something for that area? Because I, again, I am so sympathetic to neighbors, and that I'm just concerned that we can do these little things, but to take back the neighborhood for families to live is really what livability should be all about, I think.
I think part of the issue you have has to do with maybe a clash of demographics that are based around that apartment complex.
Yeah. But, well, I think we're not going to solve it tonight, but there is some immediacy about it, so I guess what I'd like to hear from all of you is, I guess, direction to staff on how to proceed. I mean, I'm very comfortable with saying, "Shut the gate now, and let's get started on some other remedies," because some of them are going to be costly, I believe. Let me hear from my commissioners, and then we'll call you. Commissioner Neely.
I was just curious from the chief. You've had interactions. What's the age of distribution? Are we even dealing with students? We're dealing with juveniles, but are they actually students at the middle school?
Most of them are not students in the middle school. Most of them are in their late teens and early twenties. I'd say probably 16 to their early twenties.
The students are being exposed to some of this.
Yes, I understand. Just a one comment, and I think I agree with the gate closure, but you know as well as I do, and I've been involved in two decisions of closing gates, and people think they're not used by legitimate students going in. We get a lot of complaints when we close those gates from the, from parents that in fact their students have been using those gates, and you may think there are a few, but usually there are a lot more than you. And so, if we close those gates, we're going to hear about that, too. And not from the people you're concerned about, but from people that had students that are going to school, and it'll happen.
And I believe that, as we did with another recent issue, we need to work with the school as well. We need to talk with them about solutions, because there certainly has to be some work on both ends, if that's possible. And I'm certainly willing to help with that conversation.
Maybe they can monitor.
Commissioner Smith.
I definitely would lean to the side of closing gate as well. But just another comment, I know at the retreat and other instances since then, we've brought up the question of whether the citizens in our city feel safe, and the perception of safety within our city, and I think we have our answer. And I think that it just adds to the fact that we do have a problem in Oregon City, and I think it's time that that is addressed as well. But I definitely support the closing of the gate, but I do think there definitely needs to be a partnership in the future with the school district to deal with some of this stuff, too, but it's...
We'll be happy to do whatever we can to help you. There was never a path.
We can't, we can't hear you, so you'll have to come, you'll have to come to the microphone and allow you, just a real brief comment.
Prior to Laurel Lane being built, the section of Laurel Lane that we live on, there was never access to the school. The people who did use that were, they cut holes in the fences that were existing, they trespassed across someone's property to get to the schools. And while the community flow gating idea is a good idea, it isn't a good idea in this case. It's created a nightmare.
Yes, thank you. I think we got the picture. I'm absolutely, I don't mean to be facetious about that at all.
I'm kidding.
Anybody else? Commissioner West.
I haven't seen where Laurel Lane is on a map. Are we talking by gardener? Is that where we're talking to?
Yes, property back to gardener.
And so, the property is not adjacent to the school district? It's a property, or it's an apartment block, and then a city, and city streets in the neighborhood? It's not touching the school district?
That's correct. It's apartments, and then Laurel Lane, our homes, and then the school.
Okay. So, I was going to say, well, what has the school district, have they, have you talked, spoken with them at all?
Yes, with Larry, had the...
School district was at our meeting?
Yeah, at the meeting, and they were, they were open to working with us as long as the commission would approve it.
Yep, great. Mr. Patterson, you had something to say?
I was just going to say, in looking at the closure of that gate, we're going to have to look at the land use approvals for that area, because there may be some actions we'll have to take there in terms of how, what the requirement was.
Okay, let's hear back from you on that, then. Okay, just a real brief comment. You have to come to the microphone, though. And then we need to move on.
Getting back to the fence and the opening that separates our neighborhood and the apartment, I definitely understand the question would be, would it resolve it? Absolutely, because the people that are hanging around that opening, and that's where it is, is the people from the apartment. That's just simply, let me get to the school in our neighborhood and how it is affecting that school. The people, most of the kids, most of the kids that hang around and that are violent are harassing these children. I've seen it, and I'm not going to get into detail what I've seen, but yes, it is affecting the children over that school, because these children are a lot younger than these kids that are, that we're talking about. So, yes, it is.
Okay, thank you. I think we understand that.
It's really quick.
Okay, one more.
If you close the gate off, it can't be made out of wood, because they're just going to smash it. That's how they're going to get through. And secondly, with regards to a 24-hour police presence, we've seen times when there's been kids out there hanging out, the police have come up and spoken to them, the police have left, and the kids are still there, and then they just go crazy.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Then it gets really tricky.
Yeah, well, we'll have to work on all of that. Okay, so we'll expect a report back from staff and with remedies, and was there any objection on the commission to the closure of the gates? Okay, I think you have some direction, and we'll start with that.
If we can, you may have to take some other action.
Sure, that's fine. Mr. Sullivan, did you have wisdom? Okay, great. Thank you for, you know, so eloquently telling us. Keep us appraised.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on in the agenda. Looking at the adoption of the agenda, is there any reason anyone needs something from the consent agenda removed for separate consideration?
I had, I had the last one, the 8D, I had just a simple question.
Okay. Otherwise, then, hearing no more changes, we will take the agenda in the order in which it is listed. So, first is a continuation of a public hearing on ordinance 8-1014, amendments to the Oregon City zoning and development codes. And the staff has requested that we continue this item to the March 18 city commission meeting. I have a motion for...
Move.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Neely, second by Commissioner West for continuance to March 18th. Nancy, the vote, please.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nocita?
Aye.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Under general business, we have a personal services agreement for our 2009 Water Master Plan and Model Updates with West Yost and Associates. And for the staff report, Nancy Kraschaw, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. West Yost completed our Water Master Plan back in the early 2000s, and we've been working off of it now for six or seven years, and it's time to update it. The other thing that we feel is important thing to do is to update our hydraulic model. For specific reasons, we need more accuracy about the flows and pressures at particular pressure-reducing valves, because we have a grant, a renewable energy grant from the Oregon Economic and Community Development Department to determine whether or not we could get hydroelectricity from these pressure-reducing valves, because of the change in pressure on either side of the valve. And we felt that because West Yost had prepared the first master plan, or the master plan we've been working off of, we asked them to update our model and update the master plan, because they have all of the existing knowledge and data that they collected from the previous, the writing of the original master plan. So, this really is an update. The fee is $88,454. That will come out of the water fund and the Water System Development Charge Fund. And they did just a super job for us last time, and we look forward to them doing the same professional update as they did before, if you approve the personal services agreement. And we did also check with the city attorney's office to make sure that we could indeed award the contract to them without going through any sort of a public request for proposals process, and they approved us going, just, they felt this was fine. The original master plan went through a competitive selection process, and this is the same kind of work, and they certainly have, they have the experience that really would make them superior to another firm at this point, anyway.
Thank you. Questions? Commissioner West.
I have a, well, a three-part question. So, is this basically getting, are you getting a new software system that logs your pipe datas and all that kind of things? Is part of this like a new software system?
Yes, we're going to be buying a new program that will model our water system.
Okay, and is, what's the SCADA, or again?
Oh, the SCADA is supervisory capability, wait, let me think a minute. What it is, is that you can monitor, monitor different features in your water system, such as levels in reservoirs. If a hatch was to open in a reservoir, it has an alarm, and that goes through the computer, goes through antennas into a computer, and then staff gets that. You do not have to, sometimes you can actually respond to the SCADA alarm through just controlling the levels of reservoirs from home. So, our on-call people take their, the computer home with them, so they can sometimes respond to the SCADA alerts at home without having to even come into town. And it's supervisory control and data acquisition.
Good, you win the prize.
Very good.
And then, you know, it's, South Fork is doing their master plan right now. So, is this a coincidence that they're, just happen to be going on together at the same time, or?
It's a coincidence.
Okay.
Any further questions? Commissioner Neely.
Yeah. I assume that you don't get much more energy out of it than you put into it. That is, you pump the water up, and that takes energy, and then it comes down through pressure, and you're able to capture some of that energy coming back.
Yeah, sometimes it's from the gravity as well, though. Where we have most of our pressure-reducing valves is when we're going, with some of our bluffs and our hills. Seventh Street is loaded with pressure-reducing valves, and then we have some of our larger ones located where we have changes in pressure zones, and those are the ones we'll be looking at for getting hydroelectricity.
My question is, has this technology been looked at sufficiently that you know it's a cost-effective technology?
That's what this study is all about.
But I presume this has been done elsewhere, or it has not been elsewhere?
I think there's a lot of experimental things going on with this particular, with the pressure-reducing valves in a water distribution system, because they're not super-high pressure. And the question is, how much energy can you get out, and is it cost-effective? And that's what the scope of work is for this study.
Could you clarify for me, then? Okay, so the grant, the $30,000 grant is going to be for the hydraulic model?
No, it's to study the pressure-reducing valves. We need the data from the hydraulic model to do the study.
Okay. If we didn't have that grant, would we not be doing this?
No, we'd be doing it anyway, because, first of all, our Water Master Plan is, this was adopted in 2004, and it's 2009, and we've actively pursued many of the capital improvement, many of the capital improvements in the Water Master Plan, and we need to keep it contemporary to our system. We've had a fair amount of growth in our system. We have our, the new Mountain View pump station really creates a different, it creates a very different improvement for pumping to the entire hilltop area. So, because we have such a powerful new pump station at Mountain View, we want to understand if we still need to make some of the improvements we thought we had to make before.
Okay, thank you. Further questions? Then may I have a motion, please?
I move to authorize the city manager to execute the personal service agreement with the West and Yost and Associates to provide professional services for the 2009 Water Master Plan and hydraulic model updates.
Moved by Commissioner Neely, seconded by Commissioner Smith. Is there further comment or discussion? Seeing none. Seeing none, Nancy, the vote, please.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nocita?
Aye.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye, motion passes five zero. The next item on our agenda is a cooperative improvement agreement with ODOT for Pacific High, for Highway 99, the pedestrian signal improvements, and this would also be our city engineer's report.
Thank you. We, we are working with ODOT to replace the pedestrian signal underneath the Highway 43 bridge, and this cooperative agreement spells out the commitments that we're making, and essentially, we're going to share the cost of the signal replacement, and then they're going to provide the maintenance, and we will pay for the electricity.
I think that's very interesting. I, just, so, my question then is, is that always true with a bridge? If a road was, goes under it, then that's part of the bridge, it's what's under it? Is that what this says?
Um, I think this says that we, we benefit, that particular location was commonly crossed by pedestrians, and it really needed a signal, and there's no traffic signal there. It's only a pedestrian signal. And because it serves the city residents, we are sharing in the cost of the improvement.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Any further questions?
The fact that it's by the bridge is kinda coincidental.
It's just coincidental, okay, great. I wasn't sure about that. Commissioner West?
Want a motion?
Please.
Are we ready for a motion?
Anytime.
I move approval to execute, to execute a cooperative improvement agreement with...
Authorize the mayor to...
To authorize the mayor to execute an agreement with ODOT establishing the jurisdictional responsibilities to upgrade, operate, and maintain pedestrian-activated signal located on the OC Bridge that regulates traffic on Highway 99 below the bridge.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner West, seconded by Commissioner Neely. Discussion? Commissioner Neely. Oh, okay, is there any, anyone else? Nancy, the vote, please.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nocita?
Aye.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye, motion passes five zero. Next...
I've got a request, if I may.
Yes, Commissioner Neely?
I mean, this just triggered it, but they're going to be closing down our Oregon City Bridge there for some major maintenance, as I understand.
ODOT?
Yeah, next year, is that right?
That's correct. They'll probably, they are going to make some improvements to the Abernathy Bridge on I-205 First that will probably start in about July of this year, is, that's what the schedule is today. And then, once those are completed, which are anticipated to take about three or four months, then they'll move to the Highway 43 Bridge. In the meantime, they will be doing some utility work on the Highway 43 Bridge.
Could I make a request that somebody from ODOT talk to us about the Oregon City Westlin Bridge and what their plans are?
Sure, yes. Yeah, and the last meeting I had with them, which was just a couple of weeks ago...
What was the starting date?
They were now anticipating having a two-year closure.
Oh, it went up, it went up from eighteen, nine months to eighteen months, and now it's two years? Oh, I would like to talk to them about that.
For all, for all, all vehicles and pedestrians and bicycles.
It's not even going to be open for pedestrians, as they originally said?
No.
Oh my, yes, let's do, that will take some...
And, um...
Do they do the rerouting and defibrillating?
They, they may start soon with a weight limit, which could include TriMet buses and trucks, soon, like, soon.
Oh, we do need to know that. That's, information needs to get to our citizens and ourselves, that's...
We've, we've encouraged them to get, they do have a website, and we've encouraged them to do, make sure they have a very, very hefty public involvement process.
Does our phone system allow us to redirect our phone messages to ODOT?
That's good.
For a two-year period? Thank you. Yeah, I mean, this is the kind of thing that people believe it's our bridge because it's called the Oregon City Bridge, and so I'm, there's not a day that goes by that I don't get asked questions about it, so I really would like us to be...
Would you like the project manager from ODOT to come up to you?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
More tomatoes for that.
Perhaps. Okay, that is, that one. That was an interesting report, too. Thanks for the question, Doug.
Yeah, we wouldn't have known.
I'm still just shaken by two-year closure.
There will be a, there will be a, an article that we prepared for the Trail New, the next version of the Trail News that we've prepared to put in it.
For spring, for the spring news that's coming?
Yeah, based on the information that we got from their website.
Oh, good, thank you, I'm glad that's there.
It was in the paper last week.
Yeah, I saw it.
I didn't see it about the closure date.
Yeah, I saw it.
And I talked to them last week.
You, you...
I talked to them two weeks...
Colin, you need to come to the microphone, please.
Yeah.
You, you, you know...
You have to.
You are not an exempt person. Introduce yourself, please.
Colin Minor from the Oregonian. What we reported was that they said it would be eighteen months...
Right, that's what I heard.
Close to bridge, uh, close to pedestrians, bicycles, and that was two weeks ago. But, and we plan to do regu, the, Oregonian...
It appears there's an update.
Yes, and the Oregonian plans to do regular updates on that topic.
Well, we hope so.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you for, for that, because I believe that that's an important service as well.
Yes.
Any more discussion on that? Thank you. Next, we have the second reading of an ordinance, number nine dash one thousand, rescinding the City of Oregon City ordinance number ninety-seven one thousand and enacting policy number five point oh seven, vehicle and custodial inventories. Mike Conrad is the, our chief, is the, staff on it? Do you have any additions since last meeting?
I...
We did discuss it in our work session very briefly, but there were no questions or concerns at that time expressed.
No. Madam Mayor, staff still recommending that the city commission approve the second reading of ordinance zero-nine one thousand rescinding the City of Oregon City ordinance ninety-seven one thousand and adopting the Oregon City Police Department policy five point zero seven, vehicles and custodial inventories.
Okay, thank you. At our places, we have two memorandums from Kevin Hunt, and then a response from our Assistant City Attorney Bill Kabaisman in response. So, anybody have any questions at this point?
No, I don't.
We do have someone who signed up to speak, and that would be Kevin Hunt, so please come forward, introduce yourself, and have three minutes, up to, up to three minutes.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. Kevin Hunt, 1045 Sunny Lane. Because I reduced my remarks to writing, which I distributed earlier this evening, I won't belabor them, I instead will discuss their nature. The policy five point oh seven version of that, the current version of that policy that was updated by Chief Conrad was very well done, and as you will have noticed from my prior memorandum and the one that I've distributed this evening, I don't suggest very many changes to that because it was so well done. However, the problem that we continue to have is that no one is taking a look at the municipal code provisions one zero point three six point zero one zero, which completely dovetail into an inventory policy because you can't have an inventory until you have impounded a vehicle, a point I tried to make last, at the last meeting. What I have suggested, and in order to make this more clear, what I have done in this memorandum this evening is I have placed all of the proposed amendments that I have suggested in one document, and what I'm suggesting that the commission do in order to protect its treasury, its citizens, and its police, is to have this ordinance reference not only policy five point oh seven, but also reference changes to one zero point three six point zero one zero et cetera, because they all are related. I, I put a few hours into putting those amendments together in such a way that they would reference each other, and I don't know what else to say. I think that that's the proper, the proper way to go, and not, not to do this piecemeal. Again, five point oh seven is, is pretty well done, and I didn't suggest very many changes to it, but there's several changes that you need to make to the ordinance that already exists in the municipal code with regard to impoundments, and these two things work together, they work hand in hand, and you can, you don't have one without the other. And, and these aren't just my ideas, and these aren't just things I've pulled out of thin air. I've spent twenty-five years practicing constitutional law, this is how I make my living, and my objective and agenda here is not to make things more difficult for the police, but rather quite the opposite, to make it easier for the police, to make it easier for them to do their job, to make it more difficult for me to do my job, which is to get searches suppressed and criminals off the hook. Make it, I wanna make my own job more difficult. And I think we can, we can accomplish all three of the goals that I set forth in here, which were protect the police, protect the city treasury, and protect the constitutional rights of the citizens of Oregon City. The final thing I just want to say is, again, I would ask, if nothing else, if you would please see to it...
Sorry.
That you make this policy applicable to all police officers, not only the police officers of the City of Oregon City, or you're going, I, we're going to have this continued situation of other jurisdictions' police poaching in Oregon City, taking cars that are lawfully parked in Oregon City off the street, and the citizen of Oregon City has no rights whatsoever to even appear in his own city court. Thank you.
Thank you. And then, just to refer back to Mr. Kabaisman's memo, he suggests that we could do as Mr. Hunt suggests, but the staff recommendation is that an empowerment policy, if we wish to pursue that, and controlling police officers from other jurisdictions be done in a separate proceeding, so I guess I would just, yeah, ask the, the chief to bring us those tools back to us if that's what you would like to do.
I can look into that and report back to the commission on that.
Sure. May I have, is there further discussion? Yes, Commissioner Nocita.
I would like to ask both Mr. Sullivan and Chief Conrad just how difficult or, in your minds, objectionable it would be to incorporate Mr. Hunt's changes as it applies to other police departments into this policy as you've proposed it, not particularly the one that Mr. Hunt has proposed, but the one that city staff has proposed.
I'll take the first stab at this.
Mr. Sullivan?
What you're looking at here are our policies as a city for inventorying. I'm not sure that you would have control over Westlin, the sheriff's office, or the state police. I think what this inventory policy deals with is how our city deals with inventories of vehicles that are impounded. So, my suggestion is that we bring that back and not deal with that tonight. What we need as a city is to have an inventory policy in place. Every week that you put this over leaves us without an inventory policy. So, the suggestion that Mr. Kabaisman made as my assistant, I endorse. If you want to look at that, then we can bring it back. If the chief thinks it's a good idea, we'll bring it back.
Further comments or questions, or a motion? Commissioner West?
I'd like to move approval for the second and final reading of ordinance number zero-nine dash one thousand rescinding the City of Oregon City ordinance number ninety-seven dash one thousand and adopting policy number five point oh seven, the vehicle and custodial inventories.
Is there a second?
No, second.
Moved by Commissioner West, seconded by Commissioner Neely. On the motion for the second reading, Mr. Sullivan?
This is ordinance number oh-nine dash one thousand, an ordinance of the City of Oregon City rescinding ordinance number ninety-seven dash one thousand and adopting a new ordinance regarding inventory searches.
Thank you. Is there further comment or discussion? Seeing none, Nancy, please pull the commission.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nocita?
Aye.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye, motion passes five zero.
If I might make a comment?
Commissioner Neely?
We, we try to be very objective on our decision-making. When this was before us, before Mr. Hunt had several comments he made, our attorney, Mr. Sullivan, had said he thought that Mr. Hunt had... Mr. Hunt then came back before us and said, no, that wasn't the case, and his own statement in here, in his documents, said that was the case. I don't think anybody's well-served by presenting their case and making a statement that appears to me to be a falsehood in the process. It's very difficult to be, for me to be objective under those conditions, and I'm just laying that out in terms of how people present themselves.
I appreciate you doing that, actually. Thank you. Next, we have a new city hall, and Mr. Patterson, the plans.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the commission, we discussed this at your work session, and you had some concerns in regards to the city commission chambers being placed in this facility, as well as we discussed the possibility of putting community development versus public works. We are, the project right now, we do have everything on hold, kind of making sure that what we're doing is in line with your thinking, so I wanted to run back through this with you again. So tonight, I want to do a couple of things, and you'll, you'll bear with me, it'll, it'll take a little bit of time. I want to review the history of how we arrived at this point, so you can kind of see the work that has gone into this. I will illustrate to you as well how community development can fit into the building, and I want to discuss with you our long-range building plans that, kind of addressing a number of, of different facilities besides just this one.
Excuse me, you may have misspoken. You, you said, I think, community development, but you meant public works in the...
We had a discussion last time.
No, we had talked last time about switching...
Right, about switching.
Putting community development in versus public works in there.
Right, and that's the path on which you're pursuing?
I'm gonna show you...
You're gonna show the series, okay.
Some things I'll talk to you about.
Sit back and let you go.
Some of the issues that we may run into there and haven't got all of those resolved. I know Ms. Crashour has a conversation with the attorneys tomorrow. I'm not really looking for a particular decision in regards to design this evening, I just want, I would like to see if you have any suggestions on tweaking of things, and again, if we are in line with what you're thinking. So, anyhow, let me review what the decisions were that led to this point, and it has, as you know, we've had a long history and a discussion of the inadequacy of many of our facilities. It starts with city hall and the police building, our library, our operations center, and the swimming pool that I'll talk to you about under the manager's report this evening. And you've had to operate on many fronts, so there's been little budgetary room to deal with these type of issues. I know during the tenure I've been here, I floated a couple of different ideas, and most of those have been rejected. We talked about the Spice Building under the Hilltop Urban Renewal at one point, at the same time we were closing Urban Renewal, that probably would have been a facility you could house police, city hall, and the library in. We've talked about several options for Carnegie, and, and those have crashed and burned on takeoff as well, and we'll go through another process. We even looked at the purchase possibly of the federal building, as you know, right next to us for police at one time, but after really analysis of that, it was really too Because of many of the priorities you faced, city hall has kind of been the project that has been left behind, and so it's really kind of a question of opportunities, and this one kind of presented itself and has given us an opportunity to look at that. We haven't really chose to go to the ballot because, again, you've been looking at so many different priorities, it, really talking about facilities in the ballot, that we really had to clear some other hurdles first. And, of course, the biggest priority was the overall city, city finances. As we addressed that under the fire annexation, one of the things we knew, or was built into that plan, was moving the police offices, which we had put in the South End Fire Station, back into this building, which we knew if it was successful, that that was gonna create an additional crowding issue in this facility. That's when, so we did build into the plan some additional monies to address that issue. We put in three hundred thousand for the possible purchase of another trailer, and we looked at a hundred thousand per year for possible lease for additional space. When the McClain Clinic opportunity came up, we did look at that, we looked at it in conjunction of the library and city hall, and after some analysis of that, it was decided that we would try to locate city hall in there. We did discuss that it was not an ideal situation because it was not the largest facility, or at least didn't accommodate all the space that we needed, but given the limited dollars and the limited opportunities to address this facility, it was a way to move that forward, and we did feel that it could be a long-range solution, but it would take, take some creativity in doing that, and I think you'll see that we've kind of gotten there. Also, by doing that, the city hall issue, is we preserve the ability to look at a ballot issue sometime for either police or library, or a combination of those two, or any other measure, because we, we didn't have to do that under city hall. And I can tell you, city hall issue is one of the hardest things you'll ever try to pass. And I can tell you, city hall issue is one of the hardest things you'll ever try to pass on election, so you have to kind of find other ways to try to solve those issues. One of the things we looked at is what would be left behind and not moved to this facility? And what we originally talked about was police, the court system, the commission chambers, and community development. In talking about that, there was some concern about city commission chambers not being moved down. At our retreat, we talked about leaving code enforcement here, and at that point, we did begin to look at moving the commission chambers into this facility. I will say there's an advantage to doing that, because if you think about it, the way that most citizens are going to experience your investment here is through the city commission chambers. If you take that out, you're always going to have- they're not- you're not going to have many citizens really experience that building unless they're operating it, and that's going to be somewhat of a negative for the investment that you've made. The other thing that you run into is there is a loss of functionality. Now, there's already a couple of times today, I've had to go down to my office, just in this meeting, to pick up things.
Yeah.
You just have to make sure you pick up everything and going, and you have to be wired correctly. You can get over it, but it does, there's some losses in there. The separation of the commission chambers and court provides greater utilization as well of these facility, and I will tell you that meeting space is at a premium, and this room can be a multipurpose room for both meetings, it could be a room for small events, and it can be a training facility as well. There's some other issues that I'll address here in just a second with community development. So the question is, can we move community development to this facility? The answer is yes, we can, but you just can't walk away from the lease that we're in at Redside. The lease is a ten-year lease, and the reason we entered into that, because we in Oregon City have redefined the term interim, and at the time, we really-
You mean like the interim covered wagons?
Yeah. And at the time, we entering into that, there's a question, well, what do we negotiate here? And there really wasn't a solution for city hall on the horizon at that time. We did, though, build in some flexibility in our ability to do that. There is a three-year out option if we build a new city hall and move our administrative functions. And we're into this lease now a year, so we need to at least satisfy two additional years, which actually still works even if we switch community development and public works, because we're not ready to move public works anywhere, and both of those operations cannot fit in this building even if we took the commission chambers out of it. What we're talking about with the present look, which has the public works in here, and you will see, it's roughly this section. Boy, these new glasses work pretty well. And you will note, too, with public works, is this has a much smaller counter space, and to get to public works, you would come through- this door will be open during the daytime, so they would access this counter here. Here is the counter for finance, and there also is an entry off the street back in this area. Right now, public works is utilizing what I just laid out there, is roughly 2,575 feet, and community development, and looking at the next, if you could flip that screen. They will require 2,971 square feet, and there's a little difference. Again, you're looking at about the same area, little different office layout, much larger counter area, which is pretty consistent with what we have down at the Redside building at the present time. And again, you have two entry ways to get in here, so you could have some parking off the back of the street for business, which is right now, those are two-hour slots out there, and then you still have sufficient parking out front, because we, again, what you have here at city hall is you have 55 spaces, this building has 45, and again, you're not moving the courtroom, which is the one that really utilizes the maximum amount of those space. So let me talk a little bit about the long-
There, excuse me, that does not include street parking, adjacent street parking?
Yeah, with the exception, yeah, that's just out front.
Right.
And you've got a couple of- you've got some breaks in that, where actually you can have employee parking off to the side there, and then out front, you still have, I think, sufficient for the utilization we're talking here. Now, on an overflow commission night, you're going to probably spill over into the street on those evenings, but that's not nor- yeah, well, yeah.
To the parking lot over there.
We don't normally have those type of sellout crowd unless we really do something that makes people angry.
Well, and we sometimes have moved to senior center-
We're good at it.
Yeah, for the 200 people.
Yeah.
For the Walmart hearings.
So you- we could- there's a couple of ways you can do that. We could make that switch of putting community development here and moving public works to Redside. You could design this for community development and put public works in here, that's probably not an ideal situation, but you're going to have the same situation of putting them back into Redside, because we're not going to do tenant improvements down there for public works. If you put community development here, you were going to put GIS with public works down at Redside, because again, I don't have really the space to crowd them in here unless we take up this room up here, you could do that, but I'll talk a little bit about why that may not be a good idea here as we look at this. Question is, how soon could we accomplish the development with the operations center and move public works? And again, you've got to remember, we've got two years at least, at least we have to satisfy there. I don't have an exact date on that, because there's some discussions that Ms. Crushhour needs to have with the attorneys, but so I'm going to say that's within a three-to-five year period. We might be able to do it sooner. There's a couple of issues that come up. You have the money built in for- into your operations for the development of the operations So you've got one or two ways to do it. We could wait to accumulate the money as that comes in on a year, and when you have enough, then do it, that's going to take the longer range to do that in. Or you could figure out a borrowing mechanism. I think you have an issue if you start talking about revenue bonds.
Yeah.
It's one of the legacies that's been left for you to deal with, and this is the exact reason why it's not a good idea to have to- what we've done to ourselves, but I won't editorialize on that this evening. However, we could borrow internally for that, I believe, depending on what the cost of the project is, and we could go ahead and start that construction. I think that would be different, because we would be borrowing within our own funds and paying those back, but that's something Ms. Crushhour needs to talk to the attorneys and see just really how hamstrung we are on those issues. You also may have a bit of a political issue, even though I do not see it, because one of the things we did to buffer the subsidy from the general fund is we raised community development fees for space. I don't think it really matters whether it's at Redside or here, that you don't, because you're still providing space, and there's ways to work that issue, and I think that you can explain that in a way that a reasonable person would say, "Okay, that makes sense." But you may have someone raise that issue as you go through that. The question is, how does city hall, too, work into the long-range plans for other buildings? First of all, for police, it provides some immediate relief, and again, we're going to take the $300,000 for- that we're going to use to buy the trailer, and we're going to look at doing what we can for remodeling the space here to give them some breathing room. It is not a long-term fix for the police, but it begins to start us down that road. Couple of things you have done that can help that is, with some of the recent annexation, there is that fee to police, and what we've been putting that in, in a reserve fund, and I think if we can, I think the wisest way to use that, and that will build up to be, if all that development takes place, and it's going to take a while, given where the economy's at, that could be several million dollars, what's said and done, that can go to help build a police facility. Likewise, by not having to go to the ballot on city hall, it does preserve ballot space if you want to address that issue under some type of ballot measure, and then when we get in there, you know, maybe we can come up with some other creative solutions as well. The library, I think you're familiar with what we've talked about that, and depends on location how we're going to finance that. It does also, if we- the cost on this building, and what we do with remodeling here, if we build the library in the Urban Renewal district, is what's left over in the- from the $10 million budgeted in the plan, it leaves that amount that can go to library construction. That's why we want to try to keep these costs as low as we can, because that preserves some ability there. Again, if the library is built in Urban Renewal district, if it is not built in Urban Renewal district, we won't be utilizing those dollars. Be good to make that decision now, because it really may address some of the issues you'll have here or in the future. Those- and I gave you a memo before about other mechanisms that we can bring to library funding, and I still think we need to push for those, and we need to have a very serious conversation with the county, and I've given Mr. Archer some thoughts as he begins some of those negotiations as well. It does, again, by taking this off of our agenda, it does preserve also the ability, if you want to talk about, in addition to that other funding, some type of ballot measure to fund library construction, you could do that as well. The swimming pool is tied to a bigger issue, and I'm going to talk some of that this evening, and I don't have a good solution for how we address those issues at the present time. So in summary, the issues that we're trying to address are longstanding. I think the architect and your staff have developed a very workable plan that best utilizes the space that we have. It maximizes, I think, the floor space in a good plan. I don't think we lose anything significantly by putting city hall in here, in fact, there's little- or the city commission chambers, I don't think there's much more you could do there, you could gain some additional office, a little bit of growth, but that's not going to be any great savings, because again, you're only talking about 900 square feet there for the most part, which is about 200 square feet more than what you have here, but I think that room can function better, because we can build some things in there to make that a better commission chambers. I think in the future, to make this plan for city hall, and it's not something you have to do right away, is I think you do have to begin to set some type of long-term vision and master plan. I've talked to you before about other properties in that block, I think you need to look at those, come on, maybe some that back up to that, because eventually, as you create- this plan gives you some growth in terms of adding a position here or adding a position there. It gives you limited ability to add programs. Programs are usually a combination of offices that need to function together, such as Urban Renewal. If you're going to add an Urban Renewal staffing, where would you put that type program in here? Right now, the only growth you have for a real program would be this space right here, unless you begin to shift things around, and you don't really have a lot of room to that. Now, again, if you bought additional properties around here somehow or elsewhere, it wouldn't necessarily have to be adjacent, is you can locate those elsewhere. And again, with something like Urban Renewal, you could. You could either buy space or lease space for that operation, because again, that is a time-limited program. I think what you'll see, too, is we do have a long-term game plan, even though some of those rough edges need to be ironed out in terms of other city facilities. So it's a question of trying to- how do you address all of these, because we've been behind in facility development. Up until recently, we've really had no plans of how we're going to address any of this stuff. I think those are beginning to materialize. This is a crucial first step. I do think leaving the commission chambers in there invites the public more into this building. I think that's going to serve you better long-term as you begin to push some of these other issues forward as well. So that's a quick look at it. Again, I'm not asking for a design by committee, but if there's some tweaking, or if you think we're off-base, I need to know that, because we do need to keep this- I mean, we've got everything on hold since our work session, we do need to move this forward.
Your review is very helpful, and having the sequencing helped me to kind of understand a possible progression. I also had not thought about the fact of citizens- most citizens' experience with city hall is through our council chambers, and so that's a- to me, that was a- that's a very persuasive. So other comments, I like what you've outlined. Commissioner Neely?
One comment on that and a couple sidelines, but anything that keeps us from redesigning that on a regular basis, because even if the cost- say, even if the cost were comparable in terms of taking our planning group out of the red soils and then having to do some things there, if you're redesigning city halls, it's going to inconvenience the people that are coming in to use it, and so if we can come up with long-term solutions, longer-term solutions at least in terms of the layout, I think it's going to be more convenient for the planning.
You know, that's an excellent point. Not only if we built it one way and had to remodel it. All of you have worked in the building, it's been under remodeling, you have not only just disruption, but with the dust and everything, you can't help with health issues, and the public is really inconvenienced in a situation like that, so.
That jeopardize our lead certification.
(laughing).
Commissioner Smith?
My only main concern, and this is the concern that led to all the questions I had and input from last meeting, was primarily comes down to the rent that we're paying in community development. So to me, that timeline is really crucial. I, you know, I think I could be okay with two years, but at the same time, I'm not really okay with two months in that building. So that's the only real problems I have. The other thing that, you know, I also want it- I mean, I also want the rest of this building to be available for the police, so I think that the one thing that really has me in favor of pushing this forward is so that the police department gets this building, but the only thing that's keeping me reserved on it is that rent that we're paying and how long we're going to continue to pay that. So those are my two main issues.
And that, you know, that's understandable, because that was a bitter pill, but there really- we didn't really have a lot of options at the time after the annexation. We had to make room to address things. Overall, the lease on that is not an unreasonable lease, given what things are going for, and I think we negotiated a pretty good deal. We had at least more space than what was needed, because that was a space that was available that they were leasing. I think, too, is how quickly we can move is really going to depend on some of the questions that Ms. Crushhour comes up with in terms of what are our limitations and how quickly we can finance it. If we have to wait for the budget to develop those monies, that's a longer-term approach. If we can borrow internally, or if we could do a revenue bond, which I'm pretty sure we probably can't do that, but if we could borrow internally, there's a way we could take a look at that, but we'll have that answer in a few days for you.
And I fully agree with the visual impact and/or the community connection to the city hall. I think that that's something that we've done exceptionally well in this building, because as soon as you get beyond this corridor, it's very different. And so I do appreciate that, because it really does, but I think it's sometimes that facade, shall we say, is a little deceiving to the public as to where we're really at, because I remember when you used to walk into this building, what it looked like, and now when you walk into this building, it's beautiful, it really is, this part of this building. And so I think there's two sides to that. It really is important to this- for the citizens to feel connected and feel good about coming into the city hall, but at the same time, I think it gives a false impression of what the rest of the building looks like, or the rest of the-
It's a lot like Texas history. If you think about the Alamo, this is the chapel, but when you go in the back, that's where all the bodies are buried.
Right.
Okay. All right, other comments or questions about this?
There's a couple of sidebars, and I simply want to get them out before I forget them. I've had two comments of citizens as we're moving forward, one was actually about one- well, she's a citizen, too, but our municipal judge had a situation here where a defendant and the defendant's attorney were having a discussion, and a couple of jurors that were going to be- came in and sat down, because there was no other place to sit, and they heard some of that discussion, so she had to go ahead and rearrange everything again. The point is, when we design this, we must be sure that we have a area that's set aside for- separate for those kinds of situations, so we don't get crosswired.
Yeah, that's a- you've got to really appreciate that, just be here on court day and kind of see the mixture.
It's tough.
In fact, actually, if you really want to listen to some interesting conversation, all you've got to do is mill around, you can find some interesting stuff.
The other thing, a citizen mentioned this to me in terms of- The other thing, a citizen mentioned this to me in terms of City Hall and actually drove me to, to the point where I could see it. It has to do with the street parking adjacent to the crosswalk as you go towards the elevator. There's a crosswalk that goes there, then cars can advance further and come to stop signs. If you're, if you're, if you're, if you're approaching, I'm going to say from the south, you're approaching from the south, that particular crosswalk, you have, I guess it's the pole building is there.
Yeah.
Then you have a car. You cannot see a pedestrian.
Uh huh.
And then if you're looking in the other direction, you have the retaining wall that we, brick retaining wall we have there on our, on our, our City Hall. And if there's a car parked there, and when he took me there, you could see it because there are cars parked both of those positions, you can barely see a pedestrian until they actually get into the street. And I think the simple solution is to just mark off, and I think a single parking space is all you have to do on both sides, is to make it a no parking area. Then you've got far better visibility of the crosswalk. So this is something you might want to consider.
I'll have Ms. Kraschauer take a look at that and see. As soon as we get her awake here, she'll, you made note of that, right?
Okay, well, thank you very much. We'll listen, wait for the next report on that.
But we are good to go forward here?
Sounds like it.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. Next, we have the consent agenda. May I have a motion for adoption of items A, B, and C?
Some.
Moved by Commissioner West, seconded by Commissioner Neely on the consent agenda. Nancy, the vote please.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nacita?
Aye.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. We pulled item D for separate consideration, which is the dedication for South End Road for the Oregon City Christian Church Project. And Commissioner West had some questions.
Ms. Kraschauer, so does this mean that they're going to do half-street improvements there on that side and add sidewalks? And is this being moved ahead now or do the people just file these and there doesn't mean they're building or doing anything yet?
I, is this church that's just been finished?
The Christian church, yeah.
Yes, they've already made their improvements to the South End Road.
Okay, I haven't been out there, okay, thank you. Thank you.
That was your question?
Yeah, that was it.
Okay, would you like to make a motion now?
Oh, I move approval for the deed and dedication for South End Road for the Oregon City Christian Church Project.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner West, seconded by Commissioner Smith. Nancy, the vote please.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nacita?
Aye.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. That concludes our business agenda. Now for communications, we'll start with Mr. Patterson.
Yes, have two items this evening. Need to have Ms. Kraschauer report to you on the curb in Kanema, I'll call it that. And then I need to talk to you about the swimming pool roof, so I'll let Ms. Kraschauer begin.
Yes, our Public Works Department responded to some very, very heavy flooding in the Kanema area on the January 1 storm. And we had a tremendous amount of washout of the road on Third Avenue. And the primary reason being that there was so much surface water running down the road, it, and then it went off the road and started eroding underneath the road. And I can give you a picture, perhaps Commissioner Neely, you could.
Pass the moment.
This is sort of before and after the storm.
So before is on the top now?
Yes. So our standard form of storm drainage control to keep things from going over curbs and eroding is to put in a curb and gutter and a catch basin, catch the water and then get it into the culvert to take it down below. And I would say that we weren't being as sensitive as perhaps we should have been to the Historic Review Board code that requires major capital improvements to go through the Historic Review Board. To be honest with you, a curb at first blush doesn't bring to my mind a major public improvement. But if indeed there is some interpretation that it is, then we are happy to go through the correct channels. We put a stop where we, we didn't pour the concrete for the curb and gutter. And Christina Robertson Gardner has asked us to appear at the Historic Review Board next week to get some sense from the board if they think this is a big deal or not. And we'll certainly work with them to, to try to achieve a successful outcome of this situation. There isn't, we do, we do want to avoid having something like this happen again. Granted, this storm wasn't a typical storm. I don't know if it was a 25-year storm or something like that. And it seemed to hit Kanema harder than almost every other part of town. That Coffee Creek Basin just took a tremendous amount of flow and it's done quite a bit of damage to some of the streams. There's a lot of rock that's moved around in there and some of the stability of some of those creek beds, we have some concerns about. That's another story. Our crews have walked the stream and have been noting some of these changes that have occurred in that particular channel. But back to the curb, we'll see what the HRB says and they may have some other suggestions. We could put an asphalt curb in. The problem with asphalt curbs is they're not nearly as durable and we were going for the long-lasting, durable, best kind of flow, flow control you can get, the concrete curb. The catch basin will likely stay. We need to have someplace for the water to collect, but we're happy to work with the Historic Review Board and work this out.
If you put in concrete curbs, put in horse rings.
Okay. And we did, we also, there is some concrete curb in the Kanema area, but it's not within the historic district. It's up at the fifth place area.
Thank you.
I'll need to talk to you about roof replacement at the swimming pool. Again, I don't need action this evening, but if you're comfortable with this, we will bring back formal action for you. I did mention to you that the swimming pool roof was in need of repair and we'd bring back some cost estimates so you could see if that's really something you wanted us to get underway with. There's really is a dramatic need to do that. It is not something that was put in the budget, so we are looking at a draw from contingency here. We have been working with a consultant to get us some price estimates on this and I won't go through all the 18 items that are the scope of work, but let me kind of explain what you have here. If you remember the swimming pool, you have a couple of different roofs. You have the upper roof, which actually has a lower section and an upper section. I should say, since Ms. Kai has been on the staff, we're all becoming much more roof experts because she's had us up on every one of them and I'm not a real fan of heights, so, but, so we're getting, also, if you look at the swimming pool, there's a lower roof. The upper roof area, which involves the upper, Dan?
Is it Dan?
Come back. Upper and lower. Mayor was getting nervous when you're leaving there.
I need to talk with you before you go. Thank you. Not publicly, but, thank you.
The, what we'll call Roof A, and that's the higher roof, that's a, that's the upper and a lower, and that is going to be in the neighborhood of $174,000. And then the B area, which is that kind of the part out over where you're going into the entryway, that looks like that's going to be $95,000 or in that ballpark. There's also an option for pricing of clear storey glass that could add another $6,500 on that. So all told, if we do, did all that, you're looking at roughly 325 and a half for that roof repair. It may come in by the time we actually get through putting this together and get all the formal bid, it, you know, may be a little lower, but we don't think it'll exceed that. In addition, if we're going to do this, we also need to replace the HVAC units. In fact, that's really in an emergency situation today. We have had a hole in one and so that creates some problems with it. In fact, actually, we've had to shut it down because if you run it, you could get carbon monoxide in there. And if we're, since we're going to do the roof, the one that has failed was placed in 1977. The other two units there is, one is also a 1977 version. The 10-ton is 77 that failed, the two and a half is from, is, was placed in 77 and the five tons 1990. Ms. Kai has gotten some quotes in regards to that and the quote for replacing the three units, best one we have is $32,225. There's some additional work that needs to be done. There's the electrical work, there's some structural engineering and support, alarm works, there's the permitting, that sort of stuff, framing and roofing that goes along with the curbing around those. We anticipate that these total costs will be under $50,000 so we can do that administratively. So you add the 50,000 on the 325, again, that's kind of max, we're looking at about $375,000, which is actually better than I thought it was going to be when we got into this. Now, swimming pool, again, as you go, as you remember, when we did our look at that, really to modernize that pool and bring it up to where we need to be today, if you add the parking to it, was roughly $3 million. Again, without the parking, I think it was 1.7, was it Scott, something in that neighborhood? Yeah. But, and this is, this is one of those repair items. Hopefully, we won't have to redo any of this if we get into modernization of that pool. I don't think so. It should last for a considerably long time, but I think we need to move forth and get this done. We do have sufficient monies and contingency to do it and you do have issues there that need to be replaced when we get into next winter. So if you don't have any problems with that, we'll put this together in a formal package and bring it back to you. If you do, I just need to know before we go to that work.
And 90,000 visitors a year, that's a pretty popular place.
Yeah, it's a popular place.
Commissioner West?
What are, are other options? Close the pool, not have the pool, I mean, you can't have a pool that's, I'm just asking, so just lay it out there.
Well, with the, with the HVAC units, the, you've got to replace the one because that's a health issue.
Yeah, because it's a health issue.
And if you're going to do the roof, you might as well, since, especially since they're somewhat dated, we might as well go ahead and bring those up to speed now. I don't know if you have any real good viable options with the roof. You've got some leaks in there. I'm not sure if you, if we're not, if we let it go, we're going to have some structural issues in there, so I think those are going to have to be fixed. I mean, the only option is to let it go or fix it, and letting it go is not a good one. So we don't, I mean, we could wait till next budget year and budget it, but then that's going to delay all of our work and that could, depending on how quickly we could get it turned around, which probably would be pretty fast if we got this work done, you're going to be getting in late summer or fall before you get it done and we need to really do this work during the dry season to get it done well.
Commissioner Neely?
No, my only concern would be that we make this investment and then when we come up with a big plan to fix the pool, then we've got to do something else to the HVAC system or the roof. If we, as long as we can, as long as we, as long as we can guarantee that whatever we do, we can build around it, so the investment we've made is not a lost investment.
Yeah.
Commissioner Neely, that's what we're doing is working with this consultant that does roofing, that if we ever were able to do the, the expansion of the pool, the, the other modernization items, that these can tie together. So this is a coordinated effort. We're not just thinking short-term, we're thinking long-term because it is such a significant investment, so yes.
I was sure you were.
Thank you, and there are other questions?
That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Moving into reports from the commissioners, if you don't mind, I'll start this evening. Congressman Schrader called me this afternoon. I didn't have time to send out a memo, so I thought I would just announce it because it was, though he didn't give us money. He wanted to make sure that we knew that his office will send out user-friendly formats from applications for the stimulus money. And his, and so we're supposed to call his office with questions and the definitive website is www.recovery.gov. So the important things that I didn't know for sure, the COPS program has been filled at $1 billion, so I know Chief Conrad has an application left to go. The other one that affects public safety is the BYRNE program, and I've never heard of that, probably you have, B-Y-R-N-E. It was filled at $2 billion and it's for community corrections, but it also has public safety programs in it. So that's significant. The other opportunity he thought we ought to know about was the tax credit bonding opportunities. The new, it's always been there, but the new thing is that investors get fully paid back immediately. So it's way better for investors and Congressman Schrader believes that that's going to be an opportunity, it's going to be lapped up. Then of course, well then, the other thing I didn't know about the drinking water and sewer projects is that you must already be on the list that's been submitted over the last two years. So it eliminates any new projects supposedly. So he wants us to be ready and knowledgeable and I believe that Oregon City can say we're ready in most of the categories, particularly economic development. And I talked to him about the fact that we weren't believing that paving, paving projects were actually economic development and that we were attaching job numbers to our proposals. And he said, oh, right on, because that is, he believes, really significant. And then the MPO monies, the, it's MPO, Metropol, what's?
What's, yeah.
Planning organizations. Those funds will fit into the formula and go out the door quickly, but more is going into the cities than in the regular formula. So that was good news too. Commissioner West, I've asked to take my place at a meeting tomorrow with Congressman Blumenauer and Schrader, who will be, again, going over this stuff and may give papers and should of course be promoting our agenda. And I want to thank Nancy Kraschauer also for going and talking to the Oregon Transportation Commission today and promoting our jug handle project. So there's a lot of activity happening around the stimulus money and I'm, he just wanted to make sure Oregon City was in the forefront, so I was delighted with that, that conversation.
Did you find out, you said there are more monies available to cities. Do you, do you show a feeling how that plays into the metro game, I presume?
Oh, yes, the, the.
For the transportation monies.
Yeah, the things that are going through, yes, the money will be coming through ODOT and back out and the money will be coming through the regular channels at, at, at metro. And I'm not positive what the, the pieces that are coming to cities directly, whether that's bypassing regular processes or not, but he said several times, because I had asked him at the public forum that I had gone to originally, is that make sure that you call his office if we're encountering red tape because he has promised, has been promised by the president on down that this is supposed to not be tied up in red tape. This is supposed to be able to go easily. Uh huh. And so if we encounter difficulty, I've got the numbers to call. So beware of that because that sounded good to me. And did you want to answer the question, I'm sorry, it was about, you had one.
No, no, no. No, that was it.
Oh, it was, it was the money that goes through cities as far as I know, go through metro.
That's, that's what I thought too. He wasn't, I think, sure about that piece. So that's, that's my report. I know there's going to be, again, a lot of activity on that. So our C4 meeting that I went to, will be canceled actually in March because we're all going to be at national conferences in Washington DC and doing lots of lobbying. But it was basically about stimulus and trying to help cities get up to speed on making sure that you have applications on the correct forms, which are due February 23rd from the senators' offices and you have, they have to be on that form.
For economic stimulus as well or is this for the appropriations?
This is for appropriations.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. So there's, anyway, I, I think that it, that we're, I'm just delighted with, that staff has been so ahead of the game and, and on top of all of these things because it sounds like a moving target a little bit. But, but I was, again, compliment Congressman Schrader because he does know Oregon City. He's toured our projects and he knows what we have and he said, so we'll hold him to it, he wants to see Oregon City day in the sun and have a, have us succeed economically, so that was good.
So the, at the Oregon Transportation Commission today, they deferred their decision until next Friday and they are going to want to touch base with the state legislature on the economic stimulus packages. So we, we have sent an email to Congress, Senator Schrader, Congresswoman.
Congresswoman.
Congresswoman Schrader.
No, no, she's Senator. She's Senator Schrader.
She took Senator Schrader's place.
Senator Martha Schrader.
So, and she, I, something came through my BlackBerry today that she was sending something out, I think to the OTC in support of our project.
She is.
And I think it would be helpful if we could get the same thing from Senator, Representative Kenner.
Yes.
He's taken online.
I'm sure he would do that.
So is that something that you would want to ask him to do, Mayor Norris? Or do you want me to do that?
Um, you may ask, we'll talk after.
Okay, fine, okay. And then, so that, the state asked the ODOT staff to get a little more information from cities and counties. They, the Oregon Transportation Commission was very interested in comments and they ended up reporting that they had the absolute goal was to create jobs and a lot of the points we made were that the economic spillover from those jobs is important too and should get. important, too, and should get a lot of credit for select job, or project selection.
You know, I now attend the JPAC meetings, Joint Policy Advisory Committee on Transportation, and we sent a rather strong letter to the, to ODOT and the Oregon Department of, Oregon Transportation Commission, because we believe that the projects on the ODOT list were not value-added projects, that they were, again, a lot of paving, a lot of them in remote areas of the state. And with the bulk of the population being in the metropolitan area, the bulk of the projects were not stimulating jobs where the bulk of the people are. So it, and, you know, and again, are we going to be able to look back in six years and see that they made a difference? It's really very key. So I like the way the region's holding together on that added-value piece. So are there others who have attended meetings that would like to give reports? I know we've had a lot of activity. Commissioner Nacita?
Just a brief update. I had some very good meetings over the past two or three days on my concern for the closure of Park Place Elementary School. Last night, I got to attend the PTO meeting of at Park Place Elementary School and discussed some of the discussions I've had and emails I've sent out regarding the idea of using urban renewal as one piece of what could be several pieces in helping to keep that school open. And I'll be pursuing the idea further as we proceed in the next few weeks. I also had a very good meeting today with Superintendent Rada about what the situation the schools are in. And it's bleak. I was really sympathetic to the situation that the schools are in and that the board is in and that superintendent is in. One thing I didn't know that he let me know was, a lot of the cuts the school board is facing possibly could happen, actually, before the end of this fiscal year.
Yep.
Shortened school year.
Kind of takes you back a couple of years, doesn't it?
Yeah, to say nothing of, you know, the next fiscal year, and that was, and, so it's a concern to me, and I plan to keep following up on it. But I've been encouraged at some of the emails and response I've gotten to the idea. And I just want to let people know that I'm following up on it.
Okay. None of your liaison committees met? Yes, in the last two weeks?
I've been invited to the next Clackamas Heritage Partners meeting, but that hasn't taken place.
Yeah. Great. Okay, Commissioner Smith?
No reports, because we've already covered that for the committees that we're on. But I did go to Salem, which was great. There was a lot of people there, and a lot of citizens, a lot of students, teachers.
Well, I understand that our soon-mine president spoke.
Yes, and she did better than most anyone else that spoke, including...
She is outstanding.
Yeah, and she did amazing. And so she was a real, a real good representation of our city and our school district, for sure.
And her name is Kristen Trone.
Kristen Trone, yes. So I just wanted to mention that. And a couple things going on in the school district this week as part of the 150 Things to Do in Oregon City. Sunday, the Oregon City High School band is hosting the Michael Allen Harrison concert, that's Sunday, in the auditorium, and the money goes to the boosters. And then next week, Wednesday through Saturday night, is the winter play, Simon Says, in the Black Box Theater at the high school. So those are two great ways to support the art programs at the high school. So, that's it.
Great. Any other reports?
Yeah, the only brief thing is that I went to the metro orientation, IMPAC orientation meeting. Alice went, too. And it was very, very helpful, because when I was a member of IMPAC before, there really wasn't an orientation. And I think they're doing a far better job in bringing new people in and explaining their, basically, their functions and the various issues that are going to be faced. Very good program.
Thoughts are, too? I have one more announcement that we all received. I believe that the transportation system, SDCs, are going to be updated, system development charges. And there is an open house Monday, February 23rd, from 4:00 to 5:30, right here, if you wish to come and talk about that, or I guess learn about the process as well.
What time is that?
Nancy, do you want to talk about that?
Yes, we've completed our update of the methodology of transportation system development charges and have computed the recommended charge per trip. And we met with Ernie Platt from the Home Builders Association last week to, that's one of the, one of the things we do, is make sure we are in touch with the Home Builders Association. We had a good meeting with them. It's our charges going up significantly, and he was requesting that perhaps staff come up with a recommendation to ease, to ease it in, and that's something that I'm working on. But we are, this open house was really intended for the development community. Of course, anybody is welcome to come and learn about the process we went through to update the methodology and to calculate the resulting charge. And that's right here at the, in the commission chambers, Monday at four o'clock, 4:00 to 6:00.
4:30, wasn't it?
Could be, 4:30.
Four, 4:00 to 5:30.
4:00 to 5:30.
4:00 to 5:30.
There was a 30 in there, and you were right.
Yes, 4:00 to 5:30.
Wrong number.
Okay, if there are no other announcements, we are adjourned.
Mayor, did you want to make an appointment this evening?
Oh, I did. Well, I'll undo that. I didn't bang the gavel yet. I would like to make an appointment to the Traffic Advisory, Traffic...
Transportation Advisory.
Transportation Advisory Committee, and that is Terry Wright. And I don't know his term, do you?
I don't have it.
Okay, we'll get that, we'll get that to you. But, the meeting's Tuesday, so it's important to make that.